Regular meeting of the Board of Education, January 25, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Kathy, could you please call the roll?
Thremel?
Here.
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 Present.
Here.
Here.
That seems like a bad echo.
Kathy, could you please call the roll?
Here.
Here. We're getting a little feedback.
Present.
Here.
Mice are here. Yeah. They've got me locked in a closet over there.
Yeah, I, the speaker might be on in the hall with a slight delay.
Oh, that's what that is.
Okay. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. All right, Mrs. Lock, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Of course I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Dr. Hitchens, is there any items to be added to or removed from the agenda tonight?
There are none.
All right, then the first item on our agenda tonight is public comments. I would like to welcome everyone to the meeting of the Board of Education. Everybody that wishes to address the board this evening, we're going to ask that you have seen Kathy Scafidi, our recording secretary, to submit a form for addressing the board. We ask that you put your full name and address on the form as we're required by state law to keep a detailed set of minutes for our meeting. That's going to be really odd tonight. In general, the board will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during public comments. It doesn't mean that we don't take your concerns or comments seriously. If you have specific questions or would like to further engage with the district, you may submit your questions using the link on the website and we'll have an appropriate staff member get back to you. Our BPS 101 communications manager will now explain the procedures for public comment and call up the speakers. Holly Deitchman.
Welcome to the BPS 101 Board of Education meeting this evening. We'll be called up in order of form submission. The first form received is the first person invited to speak. When your name is called, please come to the podium so that you can be heard, twice apparently. Your comments will be limited to three minutes, three minutes the first time. The three-minute timer will be broadcast up on the board here. I'm kidding, twice too. The three-minute timer will start once you're settled at the podium. At any time during this meeting, written comments may be submitted to our recording secretary Kathy Scafidi, is that my right? We ask that all speakers conduct themselves with civility and respect towards everyone in the room. And our first speaker is Nikki Woodrow.
Good evening. I'm Nikki Woodrow, fifth grade teacher at AGS. First, I'd like to thank everyone for your time and dedication during these trying times, twice. Some people may believe that not having an LRC director is a slight inconvenience. Yes, sure, they help teachers and students find books to read, but they are so much more. They are silent superheroes who are knowledgeable, wise, and caring. They are abreast of the latest literature and resources. With their specialized training, they reflectively order new materials to support kids' curriculum and initiatives like diversity, equity, and inclusion. They catalog those materials and consider which students will benefit from their precious gifts. Yet, without a paraprofessional to process, shelf, and check in and out books, this aspect of their job is greatly diminished. Luckily, I have an extensive classroom library, but even so, since the pandemic, my students have felt the effects of not having a full-time LRC director and aide. Last year, my students were not able to browse the shelves due to our pandemic restrictions. Instead, the LRC aide brought a small cart with a selection of books for the students. We made it work, but according to my current students, the cart greatly restricted their ability to browse the shelves and find something they were interested in and had not read before. There was a limited books that could fit on a cart that was trying to meet the needs and interests of so many different individuals. This year, we could visit the actual LRC. However, fifth grade was barely able to make a time work with our schedules since Mrs. Ashby is busy conducting interventions with students. Consequently, if students need a book between our weekly appointments, there isn't an LRC aide or anyone available for free-flow checkout. Yet amongst, we are happy amongst the shelves. We still miss out on Mrs. Ashby's expertise in helping students find just the right book or with the library lessons because of the lack of the LRC aide. In the past, she would have taught them how to utilize the library and know the organization system. In addition, my students missed building at the Lego table and other learning activities that promoted collaboration and critical thinking. It's more than just books. Teachers don't have time to collaborate for a number of projects that depend upon the students' use of LRC resources. I try to teach the lessons, but I'm not the expert that Mrs. Ashby is in knowing how to best use the software subscribed to and for which developmental levels that they are targeted. Her lessons have assisted past students in composing strong argumentative pieces, but without the collaboration and co-teaching, our students lack these valuable experiences that help them through middle and high school. I know that we're all doing our best in a demanding and difficult time period. That it is all we can do. However, it's important to note that just because we can manage does not mean that we should, not at the expense of the excellent educational experiences that Batavians have come to expect. So I urge this administration and school board to consider ways to find people to do interventions that can implement them and are.
Know me at past months' meetings where I've been on the brief side of my comments. I'm cashing in those extra chips tonight, so it's going to be a little bit longer. And I've invited some friends to kind of come and share the moment with me here. So thank you for your attention as I go through my talk for tonight. Good evening, members of the board. This evening, I'm framing my comments to you using a phrase we have been hearing a lot about the last couple of years, "Building our future together." I would, however, like to offer a small addendum to this phrase and talk to you about building a sustainable future together. At this time of year, senior administration begins to formulate staffing projections and needs for the next school year. It's around these needs for staff that I wish to provide you with information to ponder and to ask questions to clarify as these plans for staffing begin to take shape. For the last few months, I've come before you on behalf of the BEA to speak to you about the urgent need for our district to get up to speed concerning the topics of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We've heard from passionate educators, concerned parents, and scarred students, all echoing sentiments that attest to this need. I realize that there are plans underway that involve gathering feedback, analyzing patterns, and holding conversations that eventually will involve the synthesizing of this information into action plans. However, a critical staffing need we have as a district right now is for a DEI coordinator or coach. Pie in the sky would be an overall coordinator and a coach at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. Working with PlAC to plan effective and timely professional development for staff, serving as curricular consultants as CAC begins to review our curriculum under the lens of DEI, answering the day-to-day questions and providing guidance to staff on topics such as microaggressions and unintended bias, and being a consultant to all students when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion would help our district grow as we strive to be culturally competent and responsive to the needs of all of our students, no matter the color of their skin or the languages they may speak. It is clear as a district, the instructional coaching model is one that is valued. The need is there and the solution is apparent, and it is with utmost urgency that as a district, we create at least one staffing position to guide us down the DEI path together. A second area that could be used to sustain the great things we are currently doing while providing needed supports for students and staff is with interventionists. As an interventionist myself, I am proud of how we as a district have made strides to meet the needs of our Tier 3 students, both in academic and socio-emotional supports and instruction. It is apparent, however, that the numbers of those students needing that support has outgrown the number of interventionist positions we have, as the district has had to fill these staffing gaps by pulling some of our most vital and treasured staff members from their current roles as LRC directors and having them pick up the shortcomings in the interventionist positions. Last year during the onset of the pandemic and in creating our virtual school BVA, it was deemed necessary for us as a district to employ an all-hands-on-deck spirit and having everyone help out in any way or capacity they could to keep our kids learning. That meant that many of our staff members were assigned to do jobs that were out of their primary duties. Case in point, with our LRC directors. Many of them were given interventionist caseloads, again, in the spirit of everyone pitching in and helping out during the throes of the pandemic. With very little training and the unknowns of providing interventions in a virtual world where kids actually didn't even have books in front of them, we made it work. And in spite of everything stacked against us with the pandemic and navigating a virtual classroom, those kids grew. In the meantime, our LRC directors had to continue to fulfill the duties of their primary positions as the LRC director in their buildings. Even though there were times last year when students were not physically in the LRC, the duties of the LRC director never waned, even though they had the additional responsibilities of planning and instructing up to five or more lessons a day for interventions that was also now an additional part to their daily responsibilities. It is also important to note that a paraprofessional position that had supported the work in the LRC had been drastically cut and even in some cases eliminated, putting more of the day-to-day operations onto the workload of our LRC directors. Fast forward to this year, many of our LRC directors are still providing multiple interventions for our Tier 3 students, being asked to sub for classroom teachers due to the sub shortage, or warehouse multiple classrooms of students in their learning space when subs cannot be found and provide subsequent supervision, all while trying to complete the duties of a fully-running, in-person LRC. Essentially, our LRC directors are doing the jobs of two, if not three, people within the constraints of one day and one job's compensation. Our own district board policy 6.230 Library Resource Center states the following objectives for our LRCs. "The Library Resource Center shall provide a collection, instruction, programs, and services to meet the informational, creative, and recreational needs of students and staff. LRCs must instruct students on how to find, evaluate, and ethically use information. Learning resource objectives include: Providing a diverse and multi-format collection aligned to the school's curriculum; Supporting the quest for knowledge by providing for varied individual needs, interests, abilities, and maturity levels; Nurturing a love for lifelong reading; Offering and inviting supportive and stimulating environment that encourages learning within and beyond its walls; Fostering information literacy skills to support lifelong learning; Promoting equitable access to ideas and information; And empowering students to become information users, critical thinkers, creative problem solvers, and skilled readers." In Board Policy Section 6.230-E1, "Learning Resource Center Mission and Philosophy," it states that the Learning Resource Center extends the classroom for students and staff by creating an environment that supports and enhances curriculum. This is accomplished most effectively when all individuals have full access to a wide variety of resources and learning opportunities designed to develop skills necessary to become discriminating users of ideas and information. It goes on to say that "The mission of each Learning Resource Center in District 101 shall be to collaborate with teachers in achieving the following objectives: Promoting enjoyment of reading; Providing leadership, instruction, and consulting assistance in the use of instructional resources and information technology while functioning as the information center of the school; Ensuring access to information and ideas that will enhance the learning experiences for the entire school community; Developing resources and activities that contribute to lifelong learning; And building a collection that supports the curriculum and strives to meet the changing needs of a diverse school community." Other operational tasks that fall under the purview of the LRCs is challenge and acceptance policies, SOPA compliance with electronic resources, DEI audit of LRC materials, copyright training and compliance, tracking library usage, circulation, database use, and collaboration data, spearheading grants, book fairs, and fundraising for the LRC, and possibly, most importantly, collaborating with staff to keep up with curriculum initiatives and learning cycles. It is the LRC director in each building that oversees each and every one of those things that I've just mentioned, yet more and more, they are pulled out to sub to provide Tier 3 interventions and, in short, are having to close the one place in every building that has equity of access for all students due to no staff being there. I could continue on to highlight the great things that, under current conditions, just simply aren't being done by our LRC directors, being one person doing multiple jobs. Instead, I'm going to bring this back around to where I began, "Building a sustainable future together." Our LRC directors cannot sustain the rigors of doing multiple jobs that have been laid before them to do. The great news is that many are completely unaware that these issues have persisted in our buildings because of the professionalism of our LRC staff and their desire to do whatever it takes for the kids in our buildings, many times at their own personal cost of time and mental well-being. This path is not sustainable. As an option, I'd like to refer back to our amazing interventionists in the district. There is a need for them, so hire more of them. Use the data that is being collected from our district assessments to gauge the exact need for Tier 3 intervention support and hire enough staff to provide that and not fill the need with our LRC directors. It is critical to the continued success of supporting our neediest learners, and it is imperative to begin the transition back to having our LRC directors be full-time in their hired positions so they can once again teach our youngest learners how to use the LRC effectively through library skills lessons. In fact, we now have half of our elementary students in grades K through 2 that have not had the same opportunities to learn how to access the LRC and all it has to offer as those same students prior to the pandemic and the shifting of the LRC director responsibilities. It's also to have adequate time to have conversations with students about books and promoting a love of reading, to have time to meet with grade level and building teams to help design lessons and provide resources that aid in meeting curricular targets and lesson cycles, to bring back the life skills of researching, information literacy, evaluating sources that have been all but lost due to our LRCs not functioning as they once were. If, as a district, we truly value the statements made in the very board policy that governs our district, it is time for our LRC directors to move back to their LRCs and be allowed to do all that they have been charged with. That would certainly be a step in the right direction towards building a sustainable future together. At this time, I would like to acknowledge these amazing women standing beside me as our district LRC directors. We have Amy Miller, I don't know where her name is, from the high school, Kelly Cook from the middle school, Sandra Lundgren from McWayne, you guys are in the right order, it's just how I've written it, Diane Kispert from Storm, Tamara Aspie from Gusterson, Cheryl Cole from Hooverwood, and also Donna Hanrahan is the LRC director at Louise White, and Julie Phillips is the director at JB Nelson. They have all gone above and beyond these last two years, and I'm hopeful that through the collective processes we value in BPS, we can get these ladies back into their LRC full-time and bring back the LRCs to where they once were, a place where one can go for information, a place of safety, a place of comfort, a place that one can find others like themselves in the pages of a book, and a place that doesn't have a sign on the door that says "LRC closed." Please join me in a round of applause for our incredible LRC directors. Thank you. In closing, I want to take one last opportunity to thank you as members of the board for the job that you do. Each month, you listen, contemplate, inquire, formulate conclusions, and then make decisions based on the information you have, what you feel is most equitable and in the best interest of all. You vote on spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on approving contracts for computer leases and copy paper, and sometimes you face making difficult decisions. From what I know of each of you, you have been and will continue to be thoughtful, reflective, and objective when it comes to rendering any decision that you make. Tonight, you will continue to be asked to make extremely important decisions. I trust that you will not rush the decision-making process. You will critically read the statement provided to you and weigh the decisions of your vote with the possible outcomes of it. I have faith that this process will guide your decisions, and I thank you for all the work you are not only about to do, but all that you have done and will continue to do in the future. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Todd. All right, next item on our agenda, our board member committee update. Chris, we'll start down with you.
I did not have any committee meetings, although I do have a CAC meeting on Thursday, so I will have an update next month.
Erin.
Capital Projects also did not meet since our last meeting, but I did attend two meetings with the facilities planning team, which included a meeting here and virtually last evening. For the audience, this is a group of volunteers and members of the district that has been working very diligently for our first community engagement session to discuss building our future together, which, as you walked in, you might have seen, is next Tuesday at, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the high school. Next Tuesday is going to be the first of four planned presentations and feedback sessions with the goal of the community helping the district prioritize and refine elements in the master facilities plan. And this first session will focus on providing the community a comprehensive assessment of our current facilities, and I would encourage everyone to attend and join the conversation. And if you need more information, you can go to the BPS 101 website. I think if you type BPS101.net, it's actually the first thing that will pop up, and I think Holly's done a great job of getting the word out, but I would ask everybody here to tell one person. We're really hoping for a strong turnout on Tuesday in the future sessions, so that's why I have to report.
Thanks, Erin. Sue.
I have had no meetings, but I would like to just kind of push out there, because Hall of Honor, we are still looking for nominees. If you go to the BPS101.net website, if you've thought about nominating somebody, please go for it. We're desperately looking for nominees. It's not difficult. So go to the BPS website under About, and then there's the Hall of Honor site that you click on. Fill out the form, we're looking for it. Also, for BFII, my other committee I'm on, Grants, teachers, fill out grant applications. It's not difficult, we've made it so easy, it's just online, you fill it out, we want to give you money. We want to give out money, so fill it out. Those are due February 4th, and then if you have a student, you know a student in high school, Joanne knows this, scholarships are due March 4th. So Grants, February 4th, scholarships, March 4th. So BFII wants to give you money, so.
Thanks, Sue. We did have Insurance Committee meeting this month, and the big focus this time was on looking at the results from our wellness screening, and then also we analyze our financials. And so that team continues to do really good work to try to provide us with the absolute best benefits while also making sure that they are sustainable and affordable. So that's what we did. RJ.
I have no committee updates.
Erin.
I have a few. PlAC met, and we have been working diligently as a collective committee to create a list of district-approved resources and literature, and have been reaching out to some of my peers to gather some of that along with other committee members. And we're also looking forward to some of our upcoming institute days, some plans that we have to focus on important DEI topics. I also went to the facilities planning meetings the last two, and I'm just going to echo everything Erin said, please tell your friends to come. And BIC meets Saturday, so I'm really looking forward to hearing about what each of our boosters organizations and the BTOs have been working on. That's all I have.
Nice.
Thanks, Erin.
That's it for our partner reports. So the next item is our consent agenda, which is an opportunity for us to pass, approve a number of items that are routine financial items, routine business items. All of them are outlined in our board book, and Mr. Pierce, if you'd take us through that.
For sure. 4.1 is the approval of the December 2021 special meeting minutes. 4.2 is the approval of the December 21st, 2021 regular meeting minutes. 4.3 is the approval of the December 21st, 2021 closed session minutes. 4.4 is the approval of the January 10th, 2022 special meeting minutes. 4.5 is the approval of the January 20th, 2022 special meeting minutes. 4.6 is our monthly personnel report. 4.7 is our monthly payroll and bills. 4.8 is the destruction of our closed session recordings. 4.9, we had one donation, $750 from Patty Richardson. She donated Yamaha saxophone and clarinet to our music students. 4.10 is the accepting, one of Tony's favorite exercises, the annual cafer for the fiscal year 2021. 4.11 is the second reading of our policy, and 4.12 is the approval of this consent agenda.
All right, are there any items on that agenda for further clarification or for removal? No? All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve all items in the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Move by Mice, or second by Lock, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda approved as presented. The next item on our agenda is our reports. I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Hitchens.
Sure, this section of our agenda, there are no votes for these agenda items, but we do have two reports that are regularly occurring, so I would entertain any questions about those two, our four requests and our treasures report, while Natalie Assel and Carrie Rue make their way up for the third report, which is Student Services. So if you have any questions while they're getting settled, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, our annual Student Services report, and Carrie and Natalie are going to kick it away.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Carrie Rue, and I'm the Director of Special Education.
And I'm Natalie Assel, I'm the Director of Student Services.
And we work very closely together. We thought it would be nice to kind of give a broad overview of the differences in our roles and some of the similarities of our work that we do under curriculum instruction. So student, I'll go ahead and start, special education is servicing students ages 3 through 22 who meet requirements under IDEA where they are eligible for special education services. And so in Batavia, we have a broad scope of what we call range of services or least restrictive environment, where students are educated within our buildings and they have services outlined on an IEP or an individual plan. And those students meet with special education teachers or related service providers to help them achieve their educational goals. Related service providers, there's a number of them that we have within the district, from speech and language pathologists, social workers, occupational therapists, physical therapists, vision, mobility, hearing, any one of those areas that a student may need an accommodation, a modification, or service. We are a team that works together with the student, with the family, the general education staff, to make sure those needs are met so that they can achieve their academic goals and progress. So that's kind of a broad scope of general ed.
And Student Services really works to support the students who have at-risk needs, whether that be academic or socio-emotional areas, some of the things that you've heard about earlier today during public comment. And so that might look like intervening supports through our multi-tiered systems of support for academic, social, emotional, or behavioral needs. It might look like Section 504 plans for students who are eligible for accommodations under the American with Disabilities Act. It may also look like making sure that the safety of our buildings and our students and staff are maintained through our threat assessment and supporting our threat assessment process, as well as making sure that our students who are hospitalized for their needs are receiving the services and transitional supports that they need coming back. are receiving the services and transitional supports that they need coming back into our buildings to feel safe and welcome, and that our staff feel equipped to make sure that they're addressing their needs as well. So we really are here to work collaboratively under the umbrella of CNI to meet the needs of all of our students who come with unique needs, either through a disability, or they just come to us with a unique set of needs.
So I think before we move into any of the information that we've pulled together tonight, Natalie and I were reflecting on what would be some of the things that we want to highlight. And I think in our tenure together, the past two years in particular, have just highlighted the incredible team of individuals that we work with on a day-to-day basis, from our BESPA to our BEA employees and our administrators in the building, how they pull together and really have that student focus on every student is important. And how do we get creative and work together to make sure that the students are feeling that their needs are being met and that families' voices are being heard a part of that planning period? And so I think that is something of great pride that we continue to have year after year. And I think the last two years in particular, some of the creative ways that people have moved out of maybe their comfort zone and tried new skills just because it was in the best interest of a child is, I think, very, very commendable and courageous. And we couldn't do our job without the amazing team that we have.
Absolutely. As we think about the report that we brought forth tonight, we've had a similar format over the last three years, and that's something that's important to us because we want to make sure that we have comparable data that helps us look at our trends in our students that we're supporting, and it helps us make decisions such as staffing and resource allocations and how we're bringing forth recommendations. So our overall observations are really, truly that the data that we're bringing before you are not any different than the trends that we've seen over the past three years in terms of hospitalizations and threat assessments, number of students with needs. I think the one piece that, as we were compiling our data for this evening, brought us to applause and gave us an opportunity to say this is something that we'd like to investigate more, are those numbers of students that we're servicing under Section 504. And so those are students who have disabilities that don't require specialized instruction, so they don't need that IEP part, but they do need accommodations to help them access our environment here at, within public schools. So that is something that we are noticing, a trend that we'd like to further explore and monitor those numbers. Are there any questions about the report?
I have a question. First of all, I want to thank you for that summary. Could one of you give a summary of when a student becomes eligible under McKinney-Vento? Could you provide a summary of what type of services are made available to them?
So McKinney-Vento are students that are lacking fixed, regular, adequate housing. And so when, one of the most common times that that happens is when a new student comes to the district to register because Kathy or front office staff have to start asking questions about address. Where are you currently residing? And when we start to sense that a child may not have a stable home, that is when we look into their McKinney-Vento eligibility. The other time that we get familiar with students is when staff start to sense that something is a little bit irregular about a child coming to school. Maybe their attendance patterns, maybe they're coming late, maybe they're mentioning that they're living with another family because they are doubled up for some reason or another. And so that is how a child becomes eligible, is that there's a series of questions that a staff member asks the family about. Is it fixed? Is it regular? Or is it adequate? So some examples that we tend to see more often is a family that may be living in a short-term motel or hotel situation, or a family has to move in with another family member or a friend because they may have lost their home for some reason or another. So a couple of things to, that the students have the right for is our number-one obligation is that their education is not disrupted. So for example, if a child is in a Batavia residence and the family has some financial hardship or some situation where they no longer have a fixed and adequate home and they have to reside with a family in Aurora, our obligation to that child is that their child's education still should be provided in their school of origin. So that would mean we would not expect them to move mid-year to Aurora to then begin their education because of some unforeseen hardships that their family has endured. So one of the number-one things that we provide these students is transportation. So they may be sleeping in Aurora, but they're still allowed to access their educational day here in Batavia because we know they have connections with their peers, with their students. We're one of the most stable things at that point in time while their family is working through some of those obstacles that may have brought them to the circumstances that they have. So transportation is a huge one. The rights of school of origin is another piece. And then really working with the families about fees, lunches, and things of those nature that we would look at waving for those families at that time. We're very fortunate and blessed in Batavia that this community is beyond outstanding in their giving nature. And so working with other organizations such as Chippin, BSPN, Batavia United Way, we could list off area churches and organizations. They oftentimes also come together and go above and beyond and really work to supplement some of those extra areas that families need to feel a little bit more stable and secure in their private lives that are beyond the scope of education. So Amy Nelson is a huge person that we rely on for building those partnerships and relationships to keep in good communication with the families and help them link to those resources in the community to make sure that their family's needs are being met while they need to get back on their feet.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
I've got a couple of questions. I know that we have been informed that we are over-identifying children of color for our special services. Do we have an idea of how, what extent that problem is and what are we doing to rectify that?
That's a great transition. Something that we really wanted to highlight in the report is the work that the Student Services Committee is going to be doing. We started a couple of weeks ago, and the work that that committee has committed to doing over the course of the remainder of this year and moving into next year. And that work is really examining data to identify trends and also the needs of our students. And so some of the data that they identified that we as a committee are going to review and create some need statements around that we'll bring to Dr. Hitchens, really are disaggregation data for students with IEPs. We're looking at dual identification data, so students who might have an indicator of low income and EL, and then what are their outcomes. Demographic data for students who are identified for Tier III intervention, who are, and also dismissal rates. So we do certainly have a format where we are committed to looking at those data and creating some statements that will ultimately result in some action items.
As we're assessing that data, since we only hear this once a year, is it possible to get an update as we get information and understand, understand what the problem is so we make sure that we're allocating the necessary resources to address it?
Yeah, I think the Student Services Committee right now is looking at those pieces. And then our role in the collaborative structures that are built are making recommendations to Dr. Hitchens, and then she helps us decide what groups would be best disseminating that information to. So it's all being part of that strategic plan. But some of those recommendations, those will be forthcoming probably more towards the end of the, end of the school year.
Okay, and then the other question that I had and, or observation, and it kind of relates to disseminating the data, is it's nice to look at the overall data, but we can't really tell who these kids are. And so if there are certain groups that we could be servicing better to lower these numbers, it would be great if we can disseminate that information, and it sounds like that's where we're going. So I would, if we, if the board agrees, to include that in the future reports would be nice.
One thing that we'll have to be careful with is identifying students because numbers can be very small with certain populations if we disaggregate data, so we'll have to pay careful attention to that.
That's fair.
The ISBE is, looks at a number of factors. I think there are 12 indicators of the information that you've talked about as well. So that is something that we get published every single year through the state of Illinois. So they look at not only disproportionality, but we also look at outcome measures for our students in transition, graduation rates, dropout rates. All that data has been collected for a number of years and is available on the website, too, for public consumption. So that's another place that is kind of a checks and balances that we have to monitor every year is to make sure that we're meeting those indicators. So that is easily available and accessible.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, well, thank you so much for that.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Really appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you for everything.
Next item is Building Our Future Together. I think Tony was taking that?
Yes, and Erin did an excellent job of, of advertising the upcoming community engagement session in his comments earlier, but I will take another opportunity to plug it to make sure that members of the community who happen to be watching have the opportunity to join us on February 1st at Batavia High School at 6:30 PM to talk about Building Our Future Together. As the board is well aware, we have been in the planning process for this master facilities plan since something about like 2016, as I recall. And we've gone through several different planning groups, and many stakeholders from throughout the community have participated. And there have been some opportunities for the community to chime in. But now that we have a near-final draft of the plan, we're going to talk about the broader details, about why we need to make some changes to our facilities and how we might go about doing that, and what the implications will be for taxpayers, that will come out in the upcoming sessions, the very first of which will be held on the 1st of February. So we just want to make sure that we get as many people there as possible so that they can learn more about the plan, and there's, there's a lot to it. And, but we definitely want to hear from them and hear their thoughts and so that we make sure that we have a plan that best fits the expectations and needs of Batavia.
Questions about that? All right, those are all of the items on our regular agenda. We do have closed session with possible action after. So after our staff and board comments, we will be adjourning to closed session, and then we will be coming out for possible actions. So let's start with Lisa.
My comments tonight would be for members of the public. I heard, if I could gather a couple of the comments and repeat some things that I've heard, we need you in a few different ways. One would be, like, we've heard twice already about attending Building Our Future Together. There really is an opportunity there for you to help us, you know, shape the facilities and the district for many future generations. So we look forward to hearing from you on that. The second place that I heard was from Sue about Hall of Honor. There's categories, if you know an alum, it really doesn't take that long to honor the person, and it really is a great way to show somebody that you are, that they've made a difference in your life. But there's also a category for teachers. So feel free to, to the parents that are listening, think about somebody that's made an impact on your child and take them to nominate them in the staff category. And third, speaking of staff, I do invite the community to visit our Human Resources page. As you can see, we have students with needs. We have a fabulous staff who are very dedicated. If you're looking to make a difference in this town, consider, there's different opportunities available that are openings we have right now, and we would love to have you consider us as, because it's a great way to make a difference in the lives of our students. So please consider visiting our HR page for current openings.
Good, Holly, she's just whipping there. Thanks, Dr. Hitchens.
You're welcome.
Board comments, we'll start with Erin Meisler.
Thank you for, to everyone that spoke this evening. We always really appreciate the community coming out and speaking to us about the host of topics that we've been hearing about. It's really important that we hear from people, and we appreciate the time and effort that you've taken to do so. I know it takes time away from your family, and time is a precious commodity, so thank you for that. I want to just echo the work of the Building Our Future Together Committee. It is important work, and I'm really looking forward to the meeting in February. And I believe that's all I have.
Thanks, Erin. RJ?
I think there is a Building Our Future.
What date was that?
I think it's February 1st.
What time?
What time?
6:30.
6:30 at Batavia High School?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hope to see you there.
I don't have any other comments.
Thanks, RJ.
That's one.
No, that was good. That was perfect. Sue.
Something about a meeting, I don't know. I would like to give Mark Anderson and his crew a big, big shout-out. Sunday morning, I was out, don't even get into it, at 6:30 in the morning, and I drove by the high school, and here's the red pickups plowing the parking lot and guys sidewalks, and they were doing an awesome job. And I can, you know, I've seen all the schools with the clear, you know, sidewalks are cleared and everything, and so just, they're doing a great job. So if you see a truck, wave, you know, give them a high five, you know, they're doing a great job. And also, I'm going to take up John's little reminder, you know, if you've got your, shovel your sidewalks. The kids are walking to school, so keep the sidewalks clear for the kids, you know. Natalie and Carrie, thank you so much for everything you do. You know, I truly appreciate all the help you've given me over the years, and you guys do a terrific job. It's a thankless job, but very, very important, and I appreciate everything you guys do. Todd, thank you for what you said tonight. Appreciate all your thought you put into it, and it was so nice to see the AGS teachers again. You know, sorry it was under a circumstance like this, but great to see everybody. So I don't get to see everybody so many times, you know, but thanks for coming out. We'd love to hear from you, so that was it. Thanks, Sue.
Erin.
Very nice. I want to echo, I won't talk about Tuesday, I think everybody knows about that, but I just want to, again, thank everybody in attendance for their thoughts and comments, and also everyone who emails. I say this every meeting, but we read everyone. It drives a lot of meaningful discussion, and so, you know, we really do encourage people to get engaged. And, and then I just kind of want to conclude with, you know, I'm a relatively new member to the board, and probably the number-one question I get is, what's it like being on a school board these days? And I usually, my standard answer is, we're living in interesting times. But really, when I'm thinking about everything that's going on in our community, it's very exciting. I mean, if you think, if you go down the street, the city council right now is talking about other things, like the pond, and that's going to really shape what Batavia looks like. And so with DEI and Building Our Future Together, I mean, we're making decisions collectively as a community that's going to shape our community for the generations that follow us. And I really have a lot of faith in my neighbors and friends and community members that if we work together and we listen to each other, we're going to make the right decisions for those that follow us. But I also know, listening and hearing, that depending on your perspective and depending on the topic, you feel like we're either moving at a rapid pace or we're moving painfully and not even moving at all on some subjects. And what I would say is that every time I'm sitting in this meeting, I look there and I see always learning and always growing. Unfortunately, learning and growing does not go in a linear line. It's a jagged path. And so I just want people to know that we have very good people working on it. We're looking for more people. That's why we're asking people to come to these meetings, to come here, to come on Tuesday night. And so I would just say, no matter where you might fall on that spectrum, if you're passionate about something, we want to hear from you. So stay engaged, keep the faith. We're moving in the right direction, I think, but we want, need to hear from you, so hang in there.
Thank you, Erin. Chris?
I'm going to echo a lot of the things my fellow board members said. Thank you for your heartfelt comments. They mean a lot to us. It's important that we hear what we're not hearing. And so if we're not getting it through the regular means, if this is the means that you need to use, I'm okay with that. I think we need to, we're in different times. We're in interesting times, and we're changing our perspectives in the way that we do things. And that requires us to rethink our systems and how they operate. And we have to look at the intersectionality of how different things may actually cause an impact someplace else unintentionally. Like, does having LRC directors out of the LRC impact our celebration of Martin Luther King Day? Does that impact our Black History Month? Does that impact? Does that impact our marginalized groups where they can't do other things? And so, you know, same thing, if we're over identifying students of color for our student services, what students are not getting services because of that? You know, so as we go through this process, we need to rethink the way that we do things and change the way that we do things, always learning and always growing so that we can do better for our entire community. And I'm optimistic that we can do that. It's going to require a lot of work. It's going to be frustrating at times. It's going to move slow for some people. It's going to move fast for others. And I think together we can get there, but we have to do it together. So. Also, Tuesday at the high school, there's a girls' basketball game at seven fifteen. So after you go to the Building Our Future Together, you can go check out the varsity team in the main gym. Thank you for coming.
That's good. I am not as eloquent or as funny as my other board members. So just again, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Again, we do have closed session tonight with potential action after, so we're going to transition to that. I would entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodge against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Move by Locke?
Second.
Second by Meitzler? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Adjourn to closed session. Do you guys need a minute or two?